I'd like to call to order the West Mifflin area school district regular board meeting being held via Zoom meeting to begin at 7:04 PM. Opening exercises, roll call.
Ahearn.
Here.
Alexandra.
Here.
Bennett.
Here.
Engler.
Here.
Kostelnik.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Mattis.
Here.
D'Senzo.
Here.
And Blazovich.
Here. Presentations, student board representative report.
So the inner club council did not meet this month, so I do not have any new information to share for today's student report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Solomon, is Kevin Rice joining us this evening?
No, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Mr. Rice had to be rescheduled.
Okay. Thank you. Number three, addendums.
Mr. President, we have one addendum under 11 Athletic Personnel C Hiring. There'll be a number three. It is recommended the board approve, ratify the five high school assistant track coaches as listed. Greg Wiscorni, John Moritz, Minnie McLendon, John Fullmore, and Mark Gambino.
Thank you, Mr. Souls. Do we have any questions or comments? Do we have a motion to add this to the agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Kostelnik. We have to vote on this, right, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Okay, roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandra.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
D'Senzo.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes. Number four, hearing of the citizens. Mr. Esper.
Okay, we have three comments this evening. The first is from Teresa Sekley, 110, Main Entrance Drive, West Mifflin. I start this with the mission of our district, which states the safety and education of our students is our number one priority. Mr. Souls, I would like to know if teachers are required to record lessons for the students as it was explained to me at the beginning of the year. I ask this question, is there maybe high school students babysitting younger students that may not be able to attend live? Also, special needs students would be able to use the recorded lessons for remediation. How is it that sixth through seventh, eighth is remote, but four and five are in person? They share the same ventilation as well as some of the same staff? Also, what about using facilities with different ages? Example of high school practicing in Homerville or middle school utilizing the high school. If we are trying to limit, to limit spread, why is this happening? In regards to the comments regarding landscapers for the districts and the Kubota, I understand we own this machinery, but being honest, the upkeep fuel, manpower, and machines will definitely be more expensive as well as the risk associated with doing that type of work. I totally agree with hiring a company to manage the grounds due to the cost effectiveness. Last but not least, I wanted to comment about the last in-person board meeting. It was very upsetting to me that a board member was making comments while another member was talking as well as continuously taking off their face mask. Please be respectful as well mindful that we are asking preschool students to wear masks when adult couldn't keep it on for an hour. Thank you for your time and dedications to the students and staff and taxpayers of West Mifflin. Teresa Sekley, parent and taxpayer.
Mr. Souls, do you mind clarifying the middle school comment quickly?
Yeah, absolutely. The breakout was among the teachers. As we all know, the students were out of the building that week, so we could contain it just to the teachers in certain rooms. So again, we sanitized the building. Again, the four or five staff was intact, so we thought it'd be in best interest to those students to bring those kids back in into school for the week. The six, or the six through eight students were out. The other issues, as far as the other kids using facilities, that's been a past practice that the other teams have used the other sites to practice in, and that was board approved as well. And the videotaping the lessons, I thought they were being recorded and being posted to YouTube and different Schoology. So I will check in on that with our principals to see why that isn't happening if it's not.
Mr. Souls, I believe they are supposed to be live for all of their classes if they're not remote. Or if they are remote.
Yes, they're in person. Yes. And we're moving more towards the live streaming the lessons as well. We're getting there.
That sounds like, that was brand new, as I think of yesterday, at least in the high school, changing the schedule and moving to a more of a regular schedule for both remote and in-person classes.
Yes, the high school's been the most progressive is moving towards that because of how the schedule's set up in the 42, or it shortened out roughly to 30-minute blocks for the students to actually come in live.
Thank you, Mr. Souls.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next comment is from Diane Stenasek, 2803 Glenny Lane Extension, West Mifflin. Questions on the agenda items under Board of Directors, item A3 with regards to this resolution 2021-04. So you would consider furloughing the professional staff due to economic and student enrollment? Are we losing Duquesne students, economic reasons because of all of our debt? Get rid of the police and just use the security guards, save $600,000? Also, I can remember a time just two years ago when Mrs. Gladden asked about committees, Mr. Mattis stated that any board member can attend any other committee meeting and also the public. However, they could not ask questions. So you did a Zoom meeting for the policy committee. Well, what about the others? As a resident and a taxpayer in the district, I, we have the right under the Sunshine Act to ask questions of the elected officials serving on the board and hear and consider the responses to the questions. I listened to six different school district meetings, and on one of the Zoom meetings, the resident actually is patched in and asks her questions and gets answered. Another one also was McKeesport, and by the way, the solicitor is Mrs. Dimaschio, answered the question. What is the district tiding from residents? As they, as there was a time just two short years ago, questions were answered. Also, you should only be reading my name and not my address over the internet.
So I can address some of those. One, that's not how it's done in McKeesport. I don't know what she's talking about. Theirs is actually pre-recorded and posted for the public, so they provide written comment. But as you know, it's public comment. Of course, we answer whatever questions we can. If they're directed specifically to the agenda, I think we're very diligent about when we get to that portion of the agenda to answer that question. I think sometimes some of the questions asked are inappropriate, and those certainly won't be answered. We do have to read your address because then that makes it inappropriate, just as we would in any public meeting, and that is recorded as she knows. So I don't think that that's a violation. As far as the resolution for the furlough, since I will answer that question, we are doing this out of the utmost abundance of caution. We are trying at all costs, as any district does, to not eliminate any position held by a current employee. We are offering early retirement incentives. We are working with the budget with Mr. Esper, but there are timelines that are required by the Department of Ed for us to do certain things. And at this point in time, we need to move forward with those certain notices and letters. So although we will do everything in our power not to have to do this, we have to at least prepare ourselves if that comes to that. As far as Duquesne students, she raises a very good question. We don't know the answer to that. It's been proposed by Duquesne that they bring back their seventh-grade students and possibly their eighth-grade students. However, the Department of Ed has not made a final determination on that. So again, that will be a factor in making a determination if a furlough is needed, because we will lose a good amount of students in the middle school. So we have to look at the reduction. Plus, we've had a declining enrollment aside from losing Duquesne students possibly. And, you know, it's COVID. Everybody's in a financial crisis. So we are obviously working with Mr. Esper. We've tried to sell off property, as everyone knows. We've tried to go and collect on delinquent taxes, as everyone knows, and settling the mall case. We're doing everything possible to avoid that. We are doing this out of caution. I don't want anyone to worry about their job right now. We have to send out the appropriate notices in case some of those things happen, such as losing Duquesne students. So we're preparing for the worst but hoping for the best. This is a procedural element that's required by the Department of Ed.
And PD also told us we will not have an answer, or possibly not have an answer to the Duquesne situation until June 30th. So the district has to prepare for that.
I'd like to comment really quick on Mrs. Gladden talking about the committees. Prior to me, Mrs. Ahearn, and Mr. Alexandra coming on board, the district never had public committee meetings. And that's something, as President, that I've changed. And Mr. Esper does a great job always putting them out there online. But now we have them as part of our work session. So I appreciate the fact that Mrs. Gladden brought that up because nobody knew about it. Half the time, they would have committee meetings without even letting certain board members know. Now, the way it's run, everybody knows when there's a meeting. If anybody public would like to come up and speak with it, yes, COVID has sort of delayed the in-person stuff, but that's definitely something that we did right.
And the reason there was only a policy meeting, because that's the only meeting that we had outside of our committee meetings, which are held on work session nights. We good?
Yes, Joe.
Moving on, my name is Andrea Jazinski, 3610 Cherry Street, West Mifflin.
Joe, I'm going to interrupt you there. I've read this public comment. One of the public comment rules is your comments have to be addressed to us as the board, and specifically Mr. Blazovich or the superintendent. Those are the rules. This isn't a public forum to take a shot at your neighbor or members of the public. So although, not to violate anyone's rights, we are going to make this public comment part of the record, but we're only going to read the portion out loud that deals directly with the district. The rest of it will be made part of our public comment and part of our records. But we don't know some of the information in this to be true, and we certainly don't want to be defaming or slandering anyone.
Okay, with that said, her comment that will be read is this district is a hot mess. I pulled my kids out because of what a mess it was, so I'm paying school taxes, tuition, and for a tutor to get my child up to speed because WMASD is so far behind in education that if it was the president of the school board, if I was the president of the school board, frankly, I'd be embarrassed. Thank you for your time. Good day.
Is that all the public comment, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I do want to address Ms. Jazinski's comment quickly. So respectfully, you know, I'm not embarrassed at all to be president of this school board. Right now, many districts, as you well know, are challenged in a multitude of ways that are very specific to those school districts. We're not unique in that circumstance. And also, as you may know, public schools are highly regulated by the, you know, our laws and systems. You know, as board members, we oversee setting policy, adopting budgets, hiring the superintendent, and ensuring our district complies with the law. So given that, in these last 12 months, just to rattle off some of the things that we've been able to accomplish as a school district, you know, we've adopted a transgender and gender expansive guideline. We've managed two separate transitions of superintendents. We hired a permanent superintendent all while a pandemic was happening. We continue to manage the COVID crisis without any clear or often conflicting local, state, and federal guidelines. We've implemented a one-for-one technology for all students, K through 12, within four months, completed a multi-facility systems upgrade, initiated district-wide curriculum review cycle, initiated a complete review of district policies, managed through potential PD decisions about our Duquesne students, and we're still managing that. We've negotiated several early retirement incentive programs for, to help maintain the district financial viability. And there's many other ones. These are the major ones, and we deal with day-to-day activities. So, you know, West Mifflin is currently graduating, capable, productive, thoughtful, involved, considerate, and educated students. Students who will be admitted into higher education, service in our military, and recruited into the workforce. I'm proud of our WMASD students, staff, and faculty. I applaud their hard work, commitment, and relentless pursuit in these ever-trading times. So I thank you for your feedback. Improvement is endless. I think we can all agree on that. I would welcome an additional conversation with you to learn more about your experiences so that we can continue to improve. So thank you for your comment. I appreciate it.
Well said, Matt.
Number five, information items.
There are none.
Number six, Board Secretary Business Managers Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would respectfully request a motion second and approver on the following items. Six A, Board of Directors, numbers one through five on pages one and two. One and two, and Miss Dimaschio covered three in public comment. Number four, this was not discussed last week. I don't believe I wasn't there. We're going to start the remainder of the work sessions at 6:00 PM. So this is just requesting, so we can advertise it for March, April, May, and June. In five, it was discussed during the work session. These are the first readings of policy 000 through 008, 0011, 011, 011.1, and policy
Any questions or comments?
I have a comment. For five M, policy 919, I do believe we need to have a good policy for our boosters and other groups. I'm voting against this because it affects so many, 19 or 20 organizations, and we haven't received any input from them, or let them know that we're going to come in and start regulating them. I think we should be proactive with the boosters, the PTA, and whomever else that we're going to set forth requiring certain information to be presented to us by mistake, not arbitrarily approve a policy and then come yelling at them when they're not complying with it. I think we should build this policy based on, with their input going forward. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. I think I needed to ask for a motion, Joe.
You did. He threw me off.
I'm sorry. Yeah, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. D'Senzo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mattis. Questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Any other comments? Sorry about the procedural issue. Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandra.
Yes for one and four, no for five M, yes for the five A through L.
So was that yes to one through four?
Yes.
Okay, and?
No for five M, and yes for all the other ones.
Okay, okay. Bennett.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes to all but number three.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes to all except five M.
Mattis.
Yes.
D'Senzo.
Yes.
And Blazovich. Okay, Mr. President, items one, two, and four passed on a nine to zero vote. Item three passed on an eight to one vote, and five A through L passed on a nine to zero vote. Five M passed on a seven to two vote. Finance on page two, numbers one through four. Number one was discussed last week. Number two was discussed, but the, we did get a one real estate tax refund, so that number was increased a little bit. Three was discussed, and number four, I don't believe, was discussed, but we are going to raise the substitution custodial rate from $9.50 to $11.50.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marshall?
Second.
Second by Mr. Alexandrov. Questions or comment? Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandra.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Mrs. Engler.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Kostelnik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
D'Senzo.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Item six, six C, purchasing and contracting, numbers one through six. One, two, three, four, and five was discussed last week. Number six was an addition. Six is an agreement with Epic Communications for E-Rate services. This is year 24. The district receives on a five-year basis federal funding, which is be used for certain technology purchases. There's a lot of paperwork and accounting that goes along with that. We've used Epic Communications. This is primarily what they do. I sent the board a bunch of information that Mrs. Engler requested related to that, and they charge a 10% fee of the, of the funding to do so.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahearn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. Questions or comments?
I had a question, Joe. With this Epic Communications, is this something that we could use for a terror switch? When we negotiated that contract and some of the IT costs?
You know, that's, that's a Steve Ford question. That's completely out of my wheelhouse. I apologize. I could find that out.
I know that, I know that this E-Rate stuff is like infrastructure costs, like network switches and stuff like that. I don't know.
He has a laundry list that we can share with the board of things that he would like to purchase with it. But he's the director of technology. I'm going to defer to him because that's, like I said, that's not my, not my thing.
Can we use it for Comcast or Verizon? Or is it the same? We're not sure.
I think we used to be able to use it for phone services, but we can't. But again, if you want to email me a list of questions, or email Mr. Ford a list of questions, I'm sure he can have answered quickly.
I got you. Thank you.
I have a question, Matt. Number four. We talked in executive session about the physical therapy, speech therapy services, the Crossroads handles, and I asked a question why our speech teacher doesn't do this. And it brought to my attention that we don't have a speech teacher. So I, I guess my question would be, like Mr. Soul said, that this is a service that AIU offered, and we're saving a ton of money by going with Crossroads Speech. But after getting the answer that we don't have a speech teacher, and it doesn't have to be talked about here, but someday I'd like to look into the fact that if we can save even more money by hiring a speech teacher, that would, I guess, get your opinion on that.
Well, actually, Mr. Bennett, you're correct. This is, we contract that service through the IU. Crossroads is bringing it. It's a contracted position. They're able to save us money on, on different levels of services, such as salaries and benefits, peasers, and so forth. So this is probably the most cost-effective way to bring the speech teachers back in-house and within ours. Then we're going back. Not only are we paying the salary, we're paying for benefits, and we're paying for peasers.
Okay.
Again, you know, starting out, it would look like a very little bit of money, but as, you know, as longevity takes place, and they get closer to the max after salary increases, so it becomes more of a burden on the, on the district. And we're, right now, I believe we have six and a half speech teachers that we're contracting out. So we're looking to cut that down as well and looking to see the needs and so forth, and really start to.
So this, this isn't just one teacher. This is, okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Souls.
You're welcome.
No further questions, Matt.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandra.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
D'Senzo.
Yes.
D minutes.
You forgot me, Joe.
I'm still stuck. I'm like who's the last year, or Tony was the last one. And Mr. Blazovich.
Yes.
Thank you. D minutes, numbers one on page two.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Marshall, second by Mrs. Kostelnik. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandra.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
D'Senzo.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Item sixty, reports, numbers one through five on page three. I'd like to add that the student's activities account wasn't, wasn't balanced in, I didn't have that number, so that number is added from last week.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Mattis, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ahearn. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandra.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
D'Senzo.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Six F, refunds subtracted from expenditures, number one on pages three and four.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Bennett. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Mattis. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandra.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
D'Senzo.
Yes.
And Blazovich.
Yes.
Six G invoices, numbers one through four on page four.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marshall. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. D'Senzo. Questions or comments?
I'd like to add that one D was added. That's our solicitor's monthly retainer from last week, and everything else was on the agenda.
Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandra.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes to everything but two A and two B.
Kostelnik.
No to two A and B, yes to everything else.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
D'Senzo.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Mr. President, items one, three, and four passed on a nine to zero vote. Item two, A and B, passed on a seven to two vote. Moving along, six H, regulations other, numbers one and two. We did have two executive sessions in January, which are properly noted.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahearn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marshall. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandra.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
D'Senzo.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Esper. Seven, District Operations.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to ask the board to recommend and approve the 2022 school calendar as presented during the work session, and also the Titan Academy hand, Student Handbook that was presented as well.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahearn. Is there a second? Motion by Mrs. Ahern. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Engler. Questions or comments? I, I had a quick question, Mr. Souls. It looked like, uh, the school year was starting at a regular time, but it looked like it was ending a little bit early. Uh, is there a reason behind that?
Well, uh, through the remote days, we were able to eliminate some of the snow days to move those back. Um, a-again, the, the, the thought of the administration putting that calendar together is the front load, the, the school year, because we want to maximize the time with kids before testing occurs, and then as soon as testing's over, of course, the school year should come to an end for our students. And I, and again, I think a lot of parents appreciate having their kids out for Memorial Day and able to enjoy the summer.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Ahern?
Yes.
Alexandrov?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Kostelik?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Mattis?
Yes.
D'Senzo?
Yes.
Blazovich?
Yes. Number eight, Superintendent's Report.
Uh, Mr. President, we have nothing under Student Services tonight. Uh, Student Activities, we have nothing. Under C, Buildings and Grounds, we have three, three activities or three organizations. Uh, the, we're trying to plan an orchestra concert for the high school on May twelfth. The auxiliary gym slash swimming pool is being, uh, asked to be used by Kenny Wood for lifeguard training. And the cafeteria for a union meeting, uh, which already happened on February sixth. So those are the, uh, building requests for the, uh, February meeting.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahern. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Engler. Questions or comments?
I have a question. Did Kenny Wood pay for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Roll call.
Ahern?
Yes.
Alexandrov?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Kostelik?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Mattis?
Yes.
D'Senzo?
Yes.
Blazovich?
Yes.
Uh, number nine, professional personnel?
Yes, under nine A, we have free requests for leaves, um, for employees. Uh, we're asking the board to approve.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. D'Senzo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern?
Yes.
Alexandrov?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Kostelik?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Mattis?
Yes.
D'Senzo?
Yes.
Blazovich?
Yes. Number ten, non-certified personnel.
Yes, under A, we're asking the board to recommend and approve the absence of, um, leave of absence for two non-certified employees. And under B, we have one resignation, and we'd like to thank Tamara Freeman for her services, and her resignation was effective January twenty-ninth.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahern. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern?
Yes.
Alexandrov?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Kostelik?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Mattis?
Yes.
D'Senzo?
Yes.
Blazovich?
Yes. Number eleven, athletic personnel?
Uh, we go down to letter C, Mr. President, under hirings, and we would like to hire, uh, ratify, uh, the hiring of the two middle school girls' basketball coaches. The, um, first one is the head coach, and in the number two is the assistant middle school coach. Uh, we misplaced him, did not put the word assistant in there. And also, that is where we have, uh, three, uh, where we're hiring the five, uh, high school track assistant coaches. So I ask the board to approve one through three this evening.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Mattis.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ahern. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern?
Yes.
Alexandrov?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Kostelik?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Mattis?
Yes.
D'Senzo?
Yes.
Blazovich?
Yes. Uh, number twelve, substit-
Under number twelve, uh, letter A, non-instructional applications, we have one substitute custodial who applied, and we're asking the board to go ahead and approve him for his services.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Kostelik?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern?
Yes.
Alexandrov?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Kostelik?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Mattis?
Yes.
D'Senzo?
Yes.
Blazovich?
Yes. Uh, thirteen conferences.
Uh, we have nothing under there, Mr. President, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Souls. Uh, fourteen, Board Presidents' Correspondence. I have one item. Um, uh, Mayor Chris Kelly reached out to me. I think he's organizing the class of nineteen-seventy-one reunion, so I'm just putting it out there that he's looking to find folks and organize the reunion for the fiftieth reunion, I think, for class of nineteen-seventy-one, so I'm just gonna put that out there, that, uh, as a public service announcement to those who may fall into that class. Uh, fifteen, Executive Session Discussion. Um, Personnel and Legal Issues were discussed. Board Reports, Committee Reports mostly were given in our work session last week. Do, does any committee chairperson wanna submit a, a, a report this week as well? Um, if not, then we can move to Still Center.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to report that the Wes Mifflin students are remote at Still Center on Wednesdays due to no bus transportation. And the twenty-twenty-one recruitment for Still Center, several communications have gone out for virtual recruiting. Emails and hard packets were sent to prospective ninth and tenth grade students. The new programs for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year are exercise, science, and rehabilitation services, medical professions, and veterinary assistance. These are potential certification classes. Also, there is a YouTube video. It's called Still Center, A Pathway to Success. And for current ninth graders, there is also a YouTube video, Where Are You Heading? These videos are very informative. If you have any questions, uh, contact Mr. Shannon Hinkle, the Guidance Counselor at Still Center. And I wanted to also report that Still Center has implemented a new Raptor system at Still Center. You scan, they scan their license, and they have to answer a few questions concerning COVID-nineteen. So that enables them to determine if it's safe for the visitor to enter the building. Uh, next meeting is March second. I would invite all my school board, uh, members to attend if they could. Um, the stakeholders also voted to make repairs on the Still Center remote, Still Center roof and the south, southeast area special school roof. The Still Center roof was eighteen-hundred. The Mon Valley was twenty-five-hundred. They also, uh, did electric-to-gas conversion for the Culinary Arts Program, and that so ends my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Kostelik. Um, my daughter's in ninth grade. We received one of those information packets. It is very well done.
Good.
Uh, seventeen, Solicitors' Report?
Our report was given in executive session unless anyone has a question for me.
Chris, I do, um, any update on that walkthrough?
The walk. You have?
Walkthrough in the middle school you were gonna invite me to?
Oh, yes. No, I'm sorry, Mr. Bennett. Um, our expert over there, he, um, he was unavailable this week, so we're gonna try to get him in there next week.
Okay, thank you.
As soon as I have a time and date, as I said, I would send that over.
No problem. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Any other questions for Chris? Eighteen, old business?
I have something I'd like to bring up. Um, I wanna give credit to Bill Bennett for reminding me of this, so this is definitely, Bill got me back on track. Um, I think we need to look at, uh, on Homerville Road, getting, and maybe is a border or is our superintendent request a school zone to get the lights up there. I know they can possibly relocate the ones from Emerson, and I don't know what happened to the ones from New England. I know in the past, and I had talked to Dr. Hoover about it two years ago, the, the biggest issue, it's a state road. Um, I don't know, Chris, if there's a proper way we can reach out to it. Anytime it's something that's borough-related, council's all over it, and they help us out to make things safer. And I think Homerville, and maybe even an assessment of everywhere around that campus to make sure that our school zone's the correct size and the notification. It doesn't prevent people from speeding, but it might discourage them, especially on Homerville Road. But Bill's, we want to brought it back up, though, so...
We have to, um, talk with PennDOT to make sure that if it's their road, that we're meeting their signage specifications, but, uh, usually in a school zone as it's properly, I, as long as it's an appropriate PennDOT sign, they're, they're probably not gonna have a problem with that.
Well, for us to move forward, then, do I need to ask for a motion for the board to vote for it?
Well, I mean, it's already a school zone, so I don't think that that's a problem. We're talking about just adding additional signage?
Well, and flashing lights and everything like that to really let people know that's a school zone. These people fly on that.
I think you would have to come back with a cost before the board vote, because if there's a cost, then the board would have to vote on the cost, but I don't think you need a board vote to, to go and investigate how much that would cost and if PennDOT's gonna permit it.
I thought that we talked about this before whenever Bill brought it up. Wasn't it like tens of thousands of dollars to try to do it? And that's why we kinda like couldn't do it like now.
Gina brought this up, and Dave brought this up, and Bill brought this up, um, and we keep getting told it's a PennDOT issue, and I did talk to Nick Piscatano. He gave me the name and phone number of the local PennDOT supervisor, and I turned that over to Mr. Hess, and that's kinda where I've left it. I figured with the winter, I'm not gonna push it until spring arrives.
I think that PennDOT obviously determines what can go there, but we have to pay for it.